Okay.
In Shore Beach, that's my. Good evening, everybody. This is Harold Watson, zoning chair of the Stratford Zoning Commission that now sits for its regular monthly meeting on Wednesday, July 13th, 2022. The quorum for this meeting is three. I will now call on the following elected commissioners. Zone one commissioner, Jim Vigliotti.
Here.
Zone two commissioner, Dion Francis. He's absent. Zone three commissioner, myself, Harold Watson, here. Zone four commissioner, Deborah Lamberty.
Here.
Zone five commissioner, Lynn Patricelli.
Here.
We need an alternate sitting in for Dion. Have you two come to a... Linda? Linda is going... Linda Manos will be sitting in tonight. Thank Rich for giving up his seat tonight, but as always, he's welcomed. We also welcome Jay Habansky, our planning and zoning administrator, Gail DiCilio, our recording secretary, Patricia Sullivan, our zoning legal counsel. Recognizing a quorum is present, I call to order this monthly session of Stratford Zoning Commission at 7:00 PM. We now are going to move to open our administrative session. And let me just make a comment. We are not doing any public comments tonight. We're really going to have an administrative hearing amongst us to discuss three subjects that need to be discussed and vote on those, plus discuss a new accessory housing project. So that is our business for tonight. Hopefully, we can get through this relatively quickly without... and give everybody good service. So, that being said, do I need to do a... Just go to minutes, right? I'm looking for someone to give me a motion on the minutes. That's Deborah's usual position. Let's see what she has to say.
Motion to approve? Nope, no, no.
No revisions today. Hey, we're doing really well then. Someone second that for me?
Second.
Jim seconds that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Linda? You're abstaining?
I wasn't here.
Oh, okay. So then Linda? Oh, she wasn't here either. We need three, so we're okay. We can accept that. Three with two abst...
And Deborah says they're okay.
Three with two abstentions. How's that? Okay, we're now going to go into our site plan review. Oh, all in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Aye and aye. All in favor. Three and two abstains. We're now going to go into our administrative site plan review for 4060 Beach Drive. There are three separate issues that we need to... And what we're looking for tonight is a vote with anything that we'd like to note to them moving forward. If you have any comments that you'd like to add to what we currently have here, that's essentially what we're looking for. So, saying that, I will open this up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I can just briefly kind of introduce these three items for 4060 through 60 Beach Drive. These are the vacant lots that are currently being utilized under the governor's executive order for outdoor dining in conjunction with the restaurant and hotel across the street. Under the town's interpretation of the executive order, we're allowing incidental uses that we typically would allow at any restaurant to operate. And that's what these three items are being applied under. Typically, I can review these, however, sometimes when... In this instance, I decided to let the zoning commission weigh in on these three items. There are really special events that are to be programmed down at the vacant lots. One is for yoga classes that happen, I believe, between eight and...
Seven.
Seven and 10.
Yes, 8:00 AM.
And there are movie nights which happen, I believe, between... Do you have those written down?
Movie nights are between 4:00 and 8:00 PM.
Or an eight.
Or sunset and 8:00 PM.
And an open-air market, which are at the same time, I believe, between 4:00 and 8:00 with some setup time. I can say that the yoga classes and the movie nights, those are things that we approved over the counter last summer, but since the applicant was coming back and kind of letting us know what they planned on programming for the summer, they decided that, well, let's just let the zoning commission have a look at each one of them. The third is the open-air market, one of which was hosted last month, I believe, without permits, and we let the applicant know that they needed to do that, and they quickly came in and put together this application, as well as some of the other items, just so that you all had a pretty good understanding as to what their intentions were going forward. And I'll just leave it at that. If anyone has any questions for me, I'll answer the best I can. Otherwise, you all can just discuss.
I would like to start with a comment thanking Jay for working this through because it's not typical of the way Stratford does a lot of these issues. He managed to work very closely with everybody to come up with these suggestions. And in all fairness to the people at Surfside, they also have come back with a thoughtful presentation of what they're doing. That being said, I think now I'd like to hear some comments. I have comments, but I'd love to hear from... Second? Aye for... Oh. Five, zero. Okay. Now I'm going to ask you guys to make comments if you would like.
Mr. Chairman, if we go in order, so the first application is for yoga classes on 40... or on Saturday and Sunday mornings from 7:00 to 10:00 AM. With other event opportunities in the town of Stratford, this doesn't really conflict with any other offerings that I was able to find. So, you know, with that said, I also think that they use the... There's a space down there that they're already... someone's already using, not on little pub property, but that class is already going on, and if they could use that space...
If you look at the... carefully at the maps that we've been given, they're moving that to... onto their property. All of these activities exist in the same corner, lower left-hand corner of the property. So if you look carefully at the maps, you'll see all the discussions tonight concerns the same portion. Go ahead, Jim, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so no, I was just saying, so I was down at the seawall one morning, I think on a Sunday, and they were using that grass median across the street from the seawall about, you know, half a block down from the property. So, I mean, I, you know, there's certainly interest in it, and it would be well-attended. So I think that this is... That we should approve this.
Do you have... Did you... How many people did you see there in attendance?
Two dozen, maybe?
Oh, okay.
You know, 15 to 20. It was a good-sized number of people.
Okay. And they estimated 20. So that's right within their estimation. Anything else?
No, I agree with Mr. Vigliotti.
Lenny?
I do agree with Mr. Vigliotti, but I do have to make some comments.
Okay.
And I'm not going to make it after every one, they apply to everyone.
We can... You can put them together. We don't... I don't see any reason we can't...
My only problem with this was the reaction of the owner when he got caught for not following the rules. He said that the town was anti-business. We are not anti-business. We want people to follow the rules and regulations. He did not.
Lenny?
I'm not going to hold that against him for these, because if I do, then I'm going to be hurting the people that would benefit from this. So that I'm not going to do. But I wasn't happy. I don't think a lot of people were happy with his comments. I think they were a little cocky, and they were a little off-base. And he's the only business owner that I can remember in this town that ever did that.
Comment taken, and there's some agreement here. I look at where we are right now, and he has learned a great deal about how to deal with us in a positive way.
To add to that, we better make sure that if we approve these, he follows all the rules and regulations that go along with it. I'm sure, Jay, you will, right?
Thanks, Jay. Linda?
I agree with Lenny. He does have a tendency not to follow the rules. But on a Saturday, do you think it would be too much traffic down there on them kind of days, on a Friday and Saturday? Is that what they're looking for, Friday and Saturday?
Are we speaking specifically about yoga? I feel like we're going to take these one at a time, right?
Okay.
Well, we've kind of melded them, beginning with Lenny. We were... I was going to try to discuss them separately. I think everybody, if I can speak for you, tell me if I'm not understanding correctly, I think the yoga is an easy thing to accept.
Okay.
Yeah, only because like the restaurants aren't even open at that hour?
Right.
So there's really nothing else that would draw people down there at that time of day?
You're talking about 7:00 o'clock. Those aren't the people that are going to be partying at 7:00 in the morning, usually. So...
Okay.
I'll change my motion from discussion to motion to approve.
But I do want us to discuss the other two elements, though?
Yeah.
Because that is more critical. Can we now... Can we move on to the...
Yeah, I would vote on each of these independently.
Need a second, huh?
Okay, a second, yes. Debbie? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Nice.
No, five, zero. Okay, now let's discuss the... Move... Well, the second one I'm going to look at is movie night. And before we start, this gets into programming three separate events that, on their own property, that I think is beginning to create a little bit of possibility of their not being able to program with this time schedule, because they have the market backing right up against movies. The only thing that's saving them right now is they can't show the movie until the sun goes down. So I think that this is something that we need to caution them, that it's their job to manage the traffic and the...
Well, now that you've had discussion, I'll make a motion for discussion.
Okay, Lenny?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you, Lenny. Now let's have a discussion. I'm going to go back the same way. Jim?
All right, so I think that the way the proposal is written, the application's written, they want flexibility in the nights that they can show movies, so I would like to suggest that we make some of our own. We try to guide them. For example, Shore Beach has movies on Friday nights, and I don't think it would be right for them to compete. So I would say that, you know, at this point, if I was going to approve, one of my suggestions or one of my conditions would be that they don't show movies at Surfside on Fridays until the middle of September, right? So the last movie scheduled at Shore Beach is on September 9th. So if they want to show movies, I would say it couldn't be on a Friday night until after September 9th. And then I think also they have to, as we were discussing, I mean, I don't... I don't... It appears that the movie time period is going to be from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, but realistically, the sun doesn't even set until after 8:00, so it just seems to me that unless we're really clear... I mean, I don't know. I don't know how they would show the movie outdoors between 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM.
Right. And I agree, this is their window for... I'm assuming they have to do setups and all of that, but it also... Remember, they're selling food and drinks also, so people would come to eat and then watch the movie possibly. I, you know, that's going to be up to them to figure out how to make that work. Yes?
You know, I have a suggestion. You know, a lot of towns, they have these municipal movie nights, and I agree with Commissioner Vigliotti that a lot of times these movies aren't even, at least right now in the dead of summer, they're not able to start till 8:30, 8:45. So I wouldn't want to put a hard cap on them as suggested as, you know, 4:00 to 8:00 PM. I would just say no later than, maybe can't go past 11:00. And I know that's what they do in my town, and it seems to work okay, but I just wanted to make a suggestion for you all that opposed... As opposed to having a finite window, maybe you just set... Put a sunset on it as opposed to, you know, it has to be between 4:00 and 8:00.
Anyone else benefiting from this movie night outside of little pubs? Is there an organization that benefits?
I believe this is with a... The applicant has stated, "We intend on collaborating with the Lordship Fathers Club on these movie nights. Examples of movies include, but are not limited to, Sandlot, Lion King, Jumanji. Attendees will be given an option to watch the movie from our picnic tables or from the beach chairs that they bring."
Jim, would you be agreeable to let them have movie nights on nights that there's none at Shore Beach?
Yes.
Now we've got to pick the night.
Deborah?
Yeah. My question is, I mean, what family is going to sit there for six hours? You know, I mean, I know they have to eat, but how long does it take you to eat and watch a movie? You know? And, you know, most events, you know, okay, it's like, okay, movies will be on Monday, and rain date will be on Wednesday, or things like that, you know? Every other event in town usually is like that.
They've given them an out by putting in and/or.
Right.
So basically, what they're saying is, we could do a movie any of these nights within this frame, win...
Right.
So theoretically, they would not be there for four to six hours. They'd be there for two hours plus. I just think that things like the sun going down is going to have to be something that... They can't negotiate that. They're going to have to live with that. In that sense, I do agree, particularly if you're encouraging kids. You can't take kids anywhere for six hours unless you have Disneyland or someplace like that.
Well, if we're going to approve this, we have to pick the nights, and we have to pick the dates, so it doesn't interfere with Shore Beach.
I've got a question. Are these municipally-sponsored movies at Shore Beach, are they always on Friday evenings or should... Some are Saturdays, so maybe we keep it open... Maybe you all could keep it open-ended that, you know, when setting the schedule, it just can't conflict with the municipally-sponsored movie night?
I think that's a good choice. So, any other discussion? Lynn, do you want to make a comment?
No.
Lenny, are you finished making comments?
I think Friday and Saturday nights, nothing should take place between the little pubs' business, Riley's next door. I just think it's going to be way too much congestion on a Friday or Saturday night this time of year. So I don't think anything should take place other than the restaurant business on a Friday or Saturday night.
So you're saying we give them the option of Monday through Thursday?
Hate these things. Friday and Saturday night is just going to be... I mean, you see how the little pub is on a Friday night or a Saturday night. It's packed. There's not even anywhere to park for the people that are at the restaurants, let alone adding an additional event.
Well, and this is the one that... The event that has the most. They're talking about 100 people is what they're expecting.
Right.
Now granted, they make a very... They make it a real point to say that they have increased parking, and just today, we got a letter from them stating that I was disappointed to see that they did not include a shuttle from the church in Lordship to there. We just got a letter today that they're still in negotiations with the church to try to make that happen. If that were to happen, then they actually will be alleviating parking problems. So in that sense, I would be more favorable if we could get them to commit to that. It would actually be a step forward for Stratford, because we don't have that in any of our events.
Make it a stipulation in the approval.
So...
Just for thought, a possible condition could be that the applicant, prior to hosting a movie night, and maybe for our next application, the next one to consider, any major event, shall coordinate with either the church or the recreation superintendent to secure satellite parking and a shuttle service to the site.
And if they were to do that, then we're not increasing traffic flow necessarily. We probably... It's probably would be a zero sum if we...
Friday and Saturdays, I'm worried about the amount of people stumbling around.
You took a note on that, though?
For my suggestion... My suggestion, I'm sorry, I was taking down a note here.
I just said that my concern on Friday and Saturday is the amount of people that will be stumbling around without these added events.
Right. So I have... No movie night shall be scheduled on the same evening as a municipally-sponsored movie night within town. Movie night events shall be scheduled only between Sunday and Thursday evenings. If we take out Saturday and Sunday, do we want to just allow them to do Thursday, or no, we just leave it out of there?
No, they didn't request Thursday, but if Sunday through Wednesday, that's four nights.
Okay, and I added in Thursday just in case, because they weren't intending to have Saturday and Sun... Friday and Saturday night, that's not an option. Maybe they decide that without Friday and Saturday night, maybe they want to take advantage of Thursday instead.
Okay.
It's up to you. I'm happy to remove it.
But it's my belief that they'll only do it maybe one night a week.
That's what I was going to say. They're going to see how it works. If the... Of these three events, they'll do yoga as much as they can, because it doesn't cost them anything. But these other two, they're going to do, depending on which one pays off the best for them in terms of attendance.
And last year, they were doing it once, I believe, once a month or once every few weeks.
Yeah.
So I think that once a week would... I would be... That's what I would anticipate, once a week.
Yeah.
And then the third I had was the applicant shall... On the evening of an event, the applicant shall coordinate with either the church or conservation superintendent to establish satellite parking and shuttle service to and from the site.
That is only right now for the movie night, correct?
Correct.
Lenny, are you okay with that? In terms of this? We're not going to solve your stumbling problem.
No, I'll make a motion that we approve movie nights with the exception of Fridays and Saturdays, and we go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Sunday, Thursday, and incorporate all of Mr. Habansky's recommendations.
Anybody second that? And do we need to discuss it anymore? Are we okay? Linda?
Yes.
Jim?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, yeah. You can only have two mics on, sorry.
Yeah, yes, I...
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye, no. No, I'm within.
You're okay, so it's five, two.
Sweet.
Okay, now we need to go to the third piece, which is the opening of our... Make a motion, open it for discussion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Sundays from Penahan to Forte, we could play at Farmers Market, Shakespeare, which is kind of a... So what I'm saying is that Thursday from 4:00, Sunday from 4:00 would be the only way to be in favor of approval. And even with the fact that the market is only in the first and third, Shakespeare's only first and third, Sundays... So theoretically, they could do one.
Could do similar to how we did with the other one, so as not... They can host the... On the proposed days and times, as long as it does not conflict with the Shakespeare market?
Which, according to their website today, I checked, it's the first and third Sunday of the month.
Is...
At Shakespeare Market. So I guess they could have the second and the fourth?
My experience with our markets, both at Paradise and Shakespeare, is they're having trouble getting the other issue. So adding another market is not necessarily... Well, that may happen. But that is the current social market.
So if we do say that you need to coordinate with the other markets, then we actually could... He could... They could work with Tom in terms of getting some of his constant people to go also to there. So the market people might be interested without creating competition against different markets. It might be a good way to solve what is the problem. Give them another revenue stream on another day.
And I'm happy to put the applicant in touch with Tom Dillon, who organizes the Shakespeare Market.
That... Yeah, that's good. I mean, that's... Yeah. Because I feel like if every... You know, you don't want to have competition. You know, you don't want people to have to choose to go one or the other. That doesn't seem right.
So...
Might I make another recommendation, the same condition number three that you had for movie night? Any night for the market, the applicant shall coordinate with either the church or conservation superintendent to establish satellite parking and shuttle service to and from the site.
Can I make a comment, please?
I'm sorry, did I... Recreation.
Yes, Deb.
For the most part, when people go to farmers markets, or they don't stay the whole time. You go for an hour or so, unless you're the vendor, and then you're there before and after and set up. So I don't know if that is going to be as much of a problem. The only problem is, they're going till 8:00 on... If they choose to, on most nights, which is conflicting with the restaurant business. People, you know, are eating and coming and going at that time as well. I think maybe that's why they want it at that time.
But we're excluding... Well, I don't know if we are, but I think we should exclude Friday and Saturday also from this event.
Should we give them a choice of one or the other? We should say no markets and no movies. I mean, let's look at the bigger picture for one moment. What they have done is they have salvaged the parking lot on the north end of the property. I think it's the north end, which was under sand. It was just... It's there, but it was under sand. So they've created another 29 parking spots there, and they've also created another six additional staff parking spaces. So they actually are adding a significant amount of additional parking, which, if they did nothing, we still need that additional parking down there. This does not... This makes a problem less of a problem, but it doesn't solve a whole problem. So any intensity of the use, they have come back with us with some effort on their part. If we can combine that with the shuttle service, then we actually have a business that is contributing to what is a real problem for Stratford in that area. So my feeling is that we should come up with a solution that doesn't cut them off at the kneecaps, but that makes it so that we still have some kind of way of controlling this. I don't know, Jay, you'll have to answer me this. If we were to... Is this... Once we say yes to this, are we legally putting ourselves in a position where this is essentially almost like a zoning document? Or is this something where a year from now, you could review it and say, "Traffic has been held down there. We've got to do something."
So, yeah, I mean, once you, once you approve these, you know, they're allowed to do that unless you maybe set a seasonal condition upon it. Because it isn't a special case, it doesn't necessarily run with the land. So, you know, an example of that is like the food truck. That was a special case application, and you couldn't give them, say, we're gonna let you try it for one year. It doesn't work like that, the approval runs with the land. Because this is an administrative site plan review, and I'll let the town attorney weigh in from a legal perspective as to whether or not she agrees or not, I think that you could set this as seasonal and ask them to come back administratively next year. And if it goes really well, maybe next year you say, well done, and you don't have to come back, keep, keep doing a great job. Hopefully, that's what happens. Just additionally, before we move on, and I just want to make sure the commissioners had a full picture in terms of what has been established at the site. There was the 29 spaces, the potential satellite parking, and there's also the 18, 18-space bicycle rack that has also been put on site to help accommodate and alleviate some of the parking. Not that it necessarily will, but I wanted to make sure you had all the information.
But this is the first business that we have in Stratford that actually came and brought that as part of a solution. So I really do applaud them for that, and I want to make sure that goes into the record. Because those are the kind of solutions that we need all of our businesses to start looking at. If we make it seasonal, essentially, that's the same as saying to them, we need to review this sometime in the winter to see how you perform, and if there's anything we need to change in the future. Correct? That does not fall on your shoulders, that would have to come back to us to review that again at some point.
Correct. I would just say, you know, this is good, the applicant shall come back in January prior to programming their 2023 season, to propose the 2023 season.
Lenny, would you be okay with that? You're not okay?
I'm not okay with any Friday or Saturday for any of these events.
Well, I would, my thinking is, I can understand concerns about movie nights where you're gonna, with the goal of bringing in families with kids, and, and maybe that's not a good environment on a Friday or Saturday night. But, you know, the, the market thing, I feel like maybe, um, that, that could still work on a Friday night. I, you know, I don't know, I, again, I, but I defer to Lenny in terms of being down there on a Friday or Saturday night. I haven't been in many years, so I don't really know what the circumstances are like down there. But, you know, as, as has been said, you know, the applicant has made every effort to address concerns about traffic flow and parking and getting people in and out of there. So, could we pick one or the other, perhaps? Either a Friday or a Saturday? But as it's written, though, that would be if they choose to do it on a Sunday, right? Because they, at this point, they would still have the option of doing it on Thursday, right? If, if, as Lenny is saying, he doesn't want to do it on Friday or Saturday, that would give them two, two Sundays and then any Thursday that they wanted.
So, say it one more time, Jay.
Well, right, so there, the application, the applicant's asking for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And if, you know, and Lenny's proposal is saying no Friday or Saturday, and then, you know, they would have Sunday, but it would be two Sundays a month because we don't want them to conflict with Shakespeare Market. So they'd have the option of two Sundays a month and I guess four Thursdays. There are however many Thursdays.
However, they're asking for Saturday early, 10 to four, and Sunday late, which wouldn't, would not conflict with Shakespeare.
And I think, and I think the way you could do it is similar to how you did it with the other one, which is, no market event shall conflict. And that way is if you have rain dates, whatever, no, no market shall conflict with Shakespeare Market. And that way it doesn't, and then you can limit it if you want by the day as well.
I'd be willing to compromise on a Saturday at 10 to four.
Right. Thank you, that's a good idea. Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, that's good, right? So that way, when the restaurants get busy at night-
They'll be gone.
They'll be gone. Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Honestly, I'll tell you, if you were in Little Italy in New York 25 years ago, you might be able to do a market at night, but I don't know that you're gonna get that many people wanting to be a vendor in a market at night.
So could you all just, so as I'm taking notes here, the days and the times that, that you are in favor of at the, at the moment?
I believe it's Thursday from four to eight, correct?
Right.
We said Friday's out, Saturday, Sunday from four to eight on all, when Shakespeare Market's not in session. And Saturday's from 10 to four.
Okay, so three days.
Correct.
Thursday, four to eight, Sundays, four to eight, Saturdays, 10 to four, and none of the days or times shall conflict with Shakespeare Market.
Correct, thank you.
Again, if this is only for one season, it will give them a good way of coming back to this and this works in this business. So they can make a case that we need to expand this. My assumption is, they're gonna look at all of these minutes and say, which ones are really, really important?
I make a motion-
I'm sorry, I'm happy to read, read all the conditions once again for you? Okay, so condition one, the market shall not conflict with Shakespeare Market. Two, on the evening of an event, the applicant shall coordinate satellite parking at Lordship School or the church and establish and coordinate a shuttle service to and from the site. The applicant shall come back January 2023 for an approval of the 2023 programming season. The applicant, events are allowed, the Shakespeare, I'm sorry, market events are allowed on Thursdays, four to eight, Sundays, four to eight, and Saturdays, 10 to four, so as long as not to conflict with Shakespeare Market.
And I would just say, either request approval or review in January. Because if it's a real disaster, you don't want to tell them they're coming back for an approval, coming back for review.
Okay, and I amend that too, requesting a review.
I'm gonna make a motion, because this is real easy, everything Jay just said.
Except for the review.
Well, he's, he's changing that.
Yep.
So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
All in favor? Sorry, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Deborah?
Aye.
Aye, so it's five zero. Okay.
Point of order?
Yes.
Does that subject for review apply to the other two applications as well, or just the one for the market?
We only applied that to the third one, since you all voted on each one independently. I, I would say that you could, you know, as long as the attorney Sullivan's okay with that, you can collectively open all three and attach that condition to all three?
That's what I would do.
How moved are we to attach that condition to all three?
Here's the other thing, I want to leave one comment, is if you want to move forward with, I don't want to move forward with it in there, because ultimately, that is what will alleviate some of the stress on the survey market. Because we now can do a market, and that's vendors with their cattle trucks, or whatever's happening in the market. So we need to really be mindful, we still have traffic situation.
I'd like to second Lenny's motion to attach the- -review to all three applications.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
But now, you have to add the last one, the shuttle, because that just not existed in these documents, other than a letter that they sent us. And I really think that can't be limited, and one additional thing to all three is that the order of shuttle bill just can't be reduced.
But I don't think they're gonna need a shuttle service for the yoga. It's, it's not that maybe.
It's basically, it's basically, can't imagine how to show up and back. But now, you have something, eight in the morning until 10, or seven in the morning until 10 at night. So theoretically, someone could come and spend half the day down there, which means you need a shuttle that's coming back and forth. In, in that sense, maybe it could be a shuttle from 10 o'clock, until 10 o'clock at night.
I, I would just add that I'm not sure that having the shuttle running for all, or, I think it's gonna have to be on a case-by-case basis, especially for the bigger events, only because I think the church is gonna be using, you know, they may not be willing to have the satellite parking be there all, just all the time. And I think that if we leave it up to the applicant in my office to say, hey, look, based on your last event, we expect there to be a shuttle service set up and, and to coordinate with Amy Noor, you know, the applicant has at least, you know, proven to me that when they say they're going to do something, they have done it. Even if we've, you know, they didn't ask, ask for permission at first, once we let them know what they're, we expect them to do, they do it. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't anticipate otherwise. So maybe you could leave, so maybe you could just not include that additional condition. I think we have in here that it's expected for the market that they will be coordinating that. And if my office determines through feedback that they need to establish it for the other events, that we can ask-
Well, I'm looking at the movie night, because the movie night is the one that they said they expect a company to be there. So-
And you have that one as well?
I'm sorry, we have that attached to the movie night as well.
So then, we have it on both of them, we just don't have it on the yoga, which-
Correct, correct.
No.
The next thing is item four, accessory apartment application, 91 Wood Avenue. This is a property that came before us a year ago. Maybe it came before planning, and I'm wrong. It was, it came before planning, it has not come before zoning. Now it's coming before zoning at this point. This is the packet that you got. From my reading of it, it looks like it falls within, if this was simply just an expansion of an existing house, it would fall within our zoning, correct, Jay? There's nothing that's pushing it outside the limits of lot usage and property line and all of that. It, so in my mind, this is not a difficult project for us to do a favorable, favorable vote on, looking at this, from what I could see, going through the floor plans and that. I'll also make the comment that with our Stratford Housing Partnership, it's exactly the kind of project that we're hoping to do more of, although it does not fall under affordable housing. But it still offers a aging-in-place approach to what's being done. So while this is a private family that is doing this, it actually is what Stratford has talked about we need to do more of. So I don't, I'll now open it up to conversations, and I'll start with Linda if I can.
Were you able to read through any of this? Were, you weren't able to read through any of this? I won't put you on the spot. Okay, I'm gonna start with Jim.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that the applicant has done a good job with the plans that they presented and justifying the need for the accessory apartment. And as you stated, because it does not change the footprint, even though there is some demolition and reconstruction involved, I, I think that we should approve it.
And I'm gonna move on to Deborah.
Okay, and actually, I drove past the property. And it's, it's, it's a lovely home, and what they plan to do with it looks like, you know, they're bringing their in-laws in, and they're gonna take care of them, which is a good thing. And, and it's a lovely area, and I think it'll, you know, I read, I looked at the blueprints, and, you know, it, it's gonna enhance the property. It's not gonna change the footprint much, you know, just a, like a miniscule amounts, and mostly in the front and the back. And it doesn't encroach on the side property. My only other question is, they do have to have approval from their neighbors? And, and I don't know if they've gotten that yet.
That was one of my questions for Jay. Do, do they need to have approval from all their neighbors?
So they don't need approval, they just have to send letters to all their abutters, which I have verification that they've done.
Oh, okay.
We have no letters of opposition or in favor, so I'll just leave that with-
Oh, okay.
And Jay, the garage that's, the single garage that's on the back of the property, is that existing?
It is.
It is. So the garage that they're taking in on the main property is the original garage, and that has been rendered sometime beyond when the house was built?
Correct. And, and I'll just add that in order for this application to even make it before you, our staff has to determine that the product, the, the property and the structures all comply. It's a compliant property, there's no non-conforming issues or outstanding violations. And we have made that determination. So this entire project complies with section 4.1.6.4 for your consideration.
And Jay, in terms of sewage and interior door, all of that discussion we had many times on accessory housing units, all of that is okay?
Yes. Complies with all, complies with all the, all the requirements set forth in the zoning regulations. And then when they go for their building permit, it'll have to comply with all building code as well.
We're gonna start with Ms. Manos.
Approve?
Anybody second that, or is there any other discussion?
Aye, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, so it's five zero. Jay, congratulate them, because I know they're an independent couple that's navigating Stratford, so hopefully it'll get them what they need.
Looking at our agenda, sediment erosion control, we have nothing. Zoning enforcement, Jay, nothing?
I have nothing.
Other items, we did have something that Deborah wanted to bring up. We're not gonna do it today, but she wanted to bring it up as a notice.
Yes, I discussed it with Jay yesterday, and it's about, just, you know, we have to get our cannabis regulations on board, so that when we get an applicant, we'll be ready for it.
That's correct. Thank you, Commissioner Limberdi, for stopping in and chatting. And so some of the things that we talked about were consideration of particular uses when a retailer is establishing itself. You know, we can't prohibit within certain distance, with, can't outright prohibit based on, you know, distances and recent-
And recent case law has determined similar to the liquor regulations. You can't actually prohibit a liquor store within, you know, 500 feet of a church or a school. But we are allowed to have that play into the consideration of the commission, but it can't be an outright determining factor as to whether or not someone can apply. So I let Commissioner Limberti know that that already is part of our regulations. Something new that I did discuss with her and that I wanted to mention this evening is that the recent legislation showed, and stop me if I spoke about this at the last meeting. When you all adopted the adult-use cannabis, it was with the, with the idea that we would only be allowed to have one retailer for every 25,000 residents. That was the law at the time. You all adopted our adult-use cannabis regulations and the legislature has since modified that law to say you can have as many as you want. So I think that what we want to do, and I already have an application prepared and ready to go for our next meeting, is to just add that in that we allow for one retailer for every 25,000 residents so, to honor the decision that was made when you all adopted the original cannabis regulations. So just, usually I like to bring it before you all and show you what the regulation's going to look like. There just wasn't the time to do that and I figured you all, having the knowledge that you already have about this, would want me to just prepare it and have it ready to go, which it will be for our next meeting. That's it. Also regarding our next meeting, we have no items, public hearing items or administrative items on our agenda. I will be away for the next two weeks on Monday. So if you all decide that you want to meet, I think, Mr. Chair, you, you seem to think that, you, you seem to think that we would not be meeting, but I, I wanted to just bring it up so that you guys, you all can talk about it now.
If we're planning to, perhaps we're going to do a CFP, we're not going to have to do it.
A question for Mr. Bansky, formerly known as Jay. How's the zoning regulation study going?
Good. So I'm, I'm pretty much finished with, when you say zoning regulation study, you mean getting ready to make all the changes, the major rewrite. So I'm putting the finishing touches on the RFP that we will go out to bid and I plan on having that ready probably mid-August. It'll go out to bid to seek consultants to help the town essentially overhaul the entire zoning reg book.
And this is, this will be not only for our use, but also for the CFPs, which we need legally to have that included in there, but also in order to have that legal pending, I believe, Patricia, for our Stratford Housing Partnership. We need something that will be able to essentially support that also. So this is going to be a big job.
And, and, and there is the chance that our release to bidders, to consultants, may get pushed back a month, potentially two months, because we wanted to get the plan of conservation and development underway, get data gathering underway, get some public commentary underway to help guide what we want to ask our consultants to focus on for the zoning regulations. So it's an, it's an intended overlap and delay. That's it. So maybe August, maybe September.
May I ask you a further question?
Sure.
Will, is this going to incorporate any of the new storm zoning regulations? Any of the new wind speed coastal regulations that they're talking about? Will that, will we see that incorporated into this?
It'll certainly be part of the discussion. You know, I think that there's, I tried my best to keep engineering specialties out of the zoning regulations because one, I'm not an engineer and I have to be able to defend these things in court when I say yes or no to them. And we've got building code, we have the floodplain administrator. So, you know, if we determine that the best place for them is the zoning regulations, then that's where they'll be. But I think that's some, I, I don't want to guarantee that they'll be in the zoning regulations, but certainly going to be part of the discussion.
Do you have anything else on your issue? Lenny, any comments? Jim, any comments? And our welcome guest tonight, Linda, any comments? You sure? You're in bed. Please give me a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, had a very good month. Jay, have a good vacation.